Good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock, so we're going to start. We have a limited agenda tonight. We're talking about signage and marijuana, not necessarily in that order. But before we start, we've got public comment. So if anybody in the public has anything to offer up that doesn't have anything to do with what we're about to talk about, this is your time. So if anybody in the audience tonight have anything they want to share? No? All right. So first up, who's walking us through this? We're starting with signage, blade signs?
Yeah.
So this is just, you know, there's always an interest in merchants downtown having more signage for buildings. Although, we actually have not heard any complaints or concerns from merchants for a number of years. It seems like we've found the right balance between not too many signs in certain merchants. But there's a growing trend in a lot of cities about the so-called blade signs. And cities usually like them, and obviously merchants like them because it makes their business attractive. But they're more focused, because they're narrow signs, they're small, they're really focused on pedestrians and not on cars, which I think is what we want to do. So we began discussions just a couple of months ago about is there where you can do blade signs? We've been looking at other communities, most notably Brookline, because they spent, I think, a lot of time doing research on doing this. So the draft order, did you pass that over to the session?
We emailed it, yeah.
Okay. So the ordinance you've got is heavily borrowing from Brookline, some of the square footage is borrowed from Brookline. So the idea of not doing, not, these are non-let signs, they're worth applying to here, and small signs, but the idea is these would be extra signs, so you could do a blade sign over and above whatever else. We're still playing with whether it should be three feet or four feet? Did you touch that, Louis?
No, we never got back to that.
Okay. So we're thinking the width of the blade should match the width of awning signs? And frankly, I'm not exactly sure what awning signs are. So they're, you know, how far they stick out from the door?
The width of an awning, like an awning itself?
How far out from the door?
How far it projects. So if you have a triangular awning, so that distance, it would go under an awning essentially, maybe have it the same.
And we went to more than four feet, assuming the awning is not, if the awning's more than four feet, we use four feet.
That seems deep, but deep, the depth of an awning seems deeper than you would want for a sign, especially sticking out on a sidewalk.
It's up high.
That's still, that seems great. I mean, so a blade sign, you could, you can have a, it just means perpendicular, basically.
Perpendicular, typically it's 20 degrees. So typically the long axis is what sticks out.
No, it's not perpendicular.
If this is the face of the building, and you're walking down the sidewalk, if it's perpendicular--
It's perpendicular to the building, to the building.
But it's, it sort of sticks out more like that. It was the long dimension that was out. Okay?
Yes.
And so the only, I mean, we allow these types of signs now. They're, they're considered either/or. So if you have a wall sign that faces the street, then a hanging sign, or this blade sign, would be considered second signage that would automatically trigger a special permit for the zoning board of appeals. And also, we only allow one foot projection from the wall. So that perpendicular distance, which is mixed for a small sign, and some people are fine with it, some people have gone for special permits, but it sort of eliminates, it's because the wall sign has potentially different, you know, target viewing than a blade sign, then we felt like instead of putting a barrier there, an additional barrier for businesses that, to allow both of them if they're following the division. But we didn't, the dimension, we were just trying to figure out what that four feet was.
Right. We began this, as I say, sort of stealing from Brookline debt in terms of their dimension making it a lot, but, so we suggested four feet. Louis looked at this, Louis has the buildings back there, and he was very comfortable with it. He thought maybe three feet made sense, somewhere in that range of three feet to four feet. I still like the four feet because it makes them longer and thinner instead of--
Well, is there, is there a--
Twelve square footage.
Okay.
Is there a 12 square--
There is a 12-- So this, this could, it could be a bracket with a round sign, it could be a tall, skinny sign, it could be a projecting--
That's correct.
Rectangular. It just seems like if you take the width of this desk, you stick it out on the sidewalk level, that just, that just seems deeper than it needs to be.
Well, I mean, Louis' guess was going from four feet to three feet. And I, I'm comfortable with four feet, but I'm on the three feet tip.
And is that 19 high, is that? Is that one of those?
Seven.
Seven?
And 19.
Nine.
Is this something that they're in a crying public need for, or is this somebody sitting around thinking of things to do?
You know, it's interesting. I, I, I do know a bunch of these panels helping downtowns on the cities, and almost no matter who's on the panel, people who are into downtown recommend towns allow blade signs. It's a sort of way to make it more vibrant. Because the signs are really focused on pedestrian, most of our signs are more visible from the road, and if we really wanted to make it a pedestrian--
Or across the street.
Or across the street.
Forty-five square feet, that's-- That's big.
That's the other sign.
Yes, 10, 10--
That's the one sign on--
Yeah, we had one not to exceed hundreds per feet, but that's in buildings.
Right, to the red, this is on the, on the third page. We're getting--
I'd be really bored if they take down the other sign and put up a blade sign instead. But we're just going to get more signs.
Yeah.
Right. That, to me, it seems like this is a secondary sign. So the primary sign is there for traffic. This is for pedestrian. So it's supplementary, but to have a four-foot wide sign almost, to me, is just a, it's substantial enough that that would be your primary sign, but that's not what we're looking for.
And eliminate our 10 square feet.
Right. But I'm just saying, even if, even if it's just, if it's a foot tall by four feet wide sticking out of a building, it just, it just seems awkward.
Mark, were you more comfortable with three feet?
Three feet's better than four.
All right, well, let me try this. What about if, I mean, what I would really like is to have blade signs replacing the other signs over time. Now, that's not going to happen for existing businesses, but as new businesses come in, if they, we will get blade signs put up when we allow them. And as new businesses come in, we can get blade signs on those businesses in lieu of the wall front signs. And we would actually, in the long run, transition to a town that has pedestrian signage instead of car signage.
But is there a problem with the wall signage? I mean, we, we've had a transition itself. Wall signage has, for a while, it was growing, and now it's like merchants themselves are looking. I'm not sure we have a problem with wall signage. We do it King Street, but on Main Street, I'm not sure.
But the other piece of it is, if you're walking on one side of Main Street and you're looking for a shop on the other side, the wall sign helps with the pedestrian and vice versa. So then you wouldn't be able to see the blade sign otherwise.
I don't have a problem with the wall sign if the supplementary signage isn't excessive. I still think if, if the blade signage, to me, was small enough that it, or large enough that it had its intended effect, so that if you're walking down the sidewalk, you see three storefronts ahead, that's the store I'm looking for, that's fine. But I don't think you need to hit somebody in the head.
So if it was three feet actually, they're all sort of the smallest square footage? We did 10 feet, sort of based on four feet half, and so how, how high do you want the sign to be?
I, I think so.
Are there, are there any photographs of places where this is, where it already exists? You know, this would be a good thing. I mean, I can't picture--
I mean, there's signs now, especially on upper floors, on Main Street, you know, frame shops or something, where there's a blade sign sticking out the second floor, but it's usually--
Yeah, but it only sticks out a foot.
Right. It's usually a long--
Yeah.
--rectangle of a foot or something.
A little like a banner. It's almost like a banner.
Yeah.
Like off the wall or something.
Right, right. I mean, I, I, if they can already do that, then why do they need more?
Because a foot doesn't really give you a lot of--
Almost has to be this way, right?
Right.
Limiting, scar.
Of course.
I mean, I have a question, if we have any existing blade signs that are that big today?
We still don't have this to cap it for.
No.
We've gotten a few special permits for more than a foot, but I don't recall that they've gone up to, I mean, I'm thinking, I think Woodstar has one that's more than a foot projection, but it's not four feet, it's just a little bit more than a foot, so.
Right.
Does Brookline have a lot of them at this four foot?
So they just pass the 12--
That's not the answer.
Right, right.
Okay. I'm sure we can find some examples of those different dimensions in the back.
Well, I'm just thinking about the rectangle dimensions, and if you want to go three feet, I don't think we need a 10-foot square foot limit. I mean, you can, you can, six square foot limit means you're going to have two foot sign, the blade is two feet up. You know, it's no longer a blade, it's a rectangle that's fairly tall. I mean, I'm leaning towards a sign that is linear if you want to come out.
Well, I can see if you came out, you could have a bracket. I think, I think, is Woodstar's had a bracket with this sign hanging on the end, it's something like that, which would be decorative and stick out--
And that's a blade sign also.
Yeah, just because it's perpendicular. But, but it doesn't have to, you know, stick me out with 20 square feet. I think you could still have 10 square feet and be, you know--
Deb, are you arguing in favor or against?
No, I think I'm leading, leading that you all to correct me in the discussion. I'm just feeling my way through it, actually.
I think-- Might have other shapes besides rectangle, they could be circles or shield shaped or--
I, I think this airs on the side of excess. I'd rather air on the side of, of smaller.
I think, I think we need to do more homework on this. I think we need to get some conceptual visualization of what the signs would look like, what the worst case would be.
Well, and I guess I wonder if we're, are we solving something? Have you had a lot of requests for the--
We have had a lot of requests, right. It's really more about, you know, how we make it more interesting for pedestrians in one form or another.
Well, but we've also not had a lot of requests because it's a financial obligation and a permit review. So people might hear the one, you know, can't be more than one foot, and they'll stop there.
If we were interested in putting up parking signage, is that in any way related to this topic?
So doing street signage is exempt from zoning. So if DPD is doing things, because ugly, that'll think, that'll stop.
I think we do it in the department.
I guess I'm just wondering about kind of the order of magnitude. I mean, if you were in a very large city, looking down a very long street, I could see where this might be helpful. But if you're in downtown North Hampton, you can stand on one corner and see both ends of downtown. I don't know, I'm just, I don't, do we really need more signage that no one seems to be, we seem to be solving a problem that doesn't exist.
You know what always struck, this is, nothing to do with signage, I have to say, it was one of the things that really struck me 20 years ago, we did this. We, when we did our downtown plan in 1994, so if I look back on the year, we gave a bunch of interns counters to measure how people walk down the street. And I'm always struck by the people who, there was a lot more traffic across the street from Blaskett Park to Blaskett Park. Smith students coming down, we deliberately crossed, because storefronts were more aligned. I sort of feel the same way with blade signs. They just, they added, we, we don't want visual clutter, but we also want visual activity. And I think they add, I think if well done, they add life to the street, make it more interesting.
I see people walk to the edge and then look up, trying to see what, what the story is as well. I, I like that myself.
You know, I'm usually so busy trying to blink, stepping on dog poop, just don't look up at the sign.
Do you live in Paris?
I mean, going back to Deb's point, you know, if you're asking me where the places are, I think there are too many signage, just the sandwich board signs. You know, there's a separate thing we talked about years ago, about using street lights, street posts for sandwich board signs to mount it there. That would be a separate thing, that's not a, that's not--
I mean, so there's a thought, so if you could be a storefront, you have your main sign, a blade sign, and a sandwich board.
No, we don't allow sandwich board signs on Main Street first floor. We allow them on basement things and side streets.
Side streets, okay.
We did, we go--
Right, 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 okay. Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to the, the concept of, you know, more blade signs or regulated blade signs. I just think this right now is, is, it just feels too big. I don't know what the magic number is.
Well, we could either do, you know, three foot signs and six square feet, or spend more time looking at examples. We're on the best part.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think it would, it would take long. I don't think the discussion would be a long one if we found a couple of examples and said, you know, this is six square feet, this is, this is a bracket with a round sign, this is a rectangle. And then we could make a quick decision that, okay, six feet is good, 10 feet is too much, or whatever it might be. And since there isn't a driving need, I don't, I don't feel the need to make a decision tonight. I think we just get a little more information and then make a decision. Be good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Who's going to lead the talk on marijuana? Now, there's a blade sign, and you could have a good one.
I guess I'll start this. So, you know, we've had discussions for a while, sort of thinking about medical marijuana, what are the appropriate places for doing it? I think at least at the staff roles, obviously not speaking for you all, we're not particularly concerned about where medical marijuana comes in, as long as the same places where the equivalent of use would be allowed. So you could imagine, in essence, there's three components that you could imagine medical marijuana taking it, looking like. One is the growing facility, growing processing facility. And it's primarily going to be warehouse use. Security issues are so strict in Massachusetts, that it's certainly not going to be a free from problem in someone's backyard. It couldn't theoretically be a greenhouse, but the security requirements to the greenhouse are so strict, that's unlikely, especially because they're going to license these things on, on or about January 1st, and they have to besiege the ground 120 days. So if you were going to do a greenhouse, you'd have to buy, you know, build a new greenhouse with really thick, thick plexiglass, so, you know, so we're mostly talking about the processing is going to be in a warehouse type of. The Massachusetts will require these things to be vertically integrated, so whoever's ever building these, whoever has this has to grow their own marijuana, process it dry, whatever they do. If they're going to want brownies, they're going to want some sort of food product that goes in, they have to do that themselves, and they have to sell it. So, so one place has to own all those things. They could be in the same site, but they could be different sites. The benefit of being the same site is you could have a license in both Hampshire County and Hampton County and have just one growing facility. The disadvantage is it's an expensive product, it needs your shipping assistance, some appeal from security standpoint. So, and obviously dispensary could be like a pharmacy, mention that, where you go and you get, you'll do your doctor's prescription. Or it could also be, this is not required in Massachusetts, it could be vertically integrated, where you go see X company's doctor, who prescribes it to you and passes it to you. Everything has to be backed, so, you know, there's a lot of details. And my feeling at least is, the growing of processing is really fine any place, as long as we deal with details of it. And I'll come back to the details in a second. The selling is really fine any place where you allow pharmacies, and any place where you allow doctors. And so I'm, I'm not suggesting any controls, all of those things we have already, which is why we haven't, why you haven't seen this earlier. Because if we did actually nothing, the zoning would allow medical marijuana uses the same things that, similar uses going on. PVPC put together a meeting, sort of, to bring in some experts, a couple of lawyers who are nationwide practice students in other states, some who runs a chain of dispensaries in Colorado. And I didn't hear anything of any concern about the, the location issue, but I think I was struck by the volume of talking about. So the state's going to keep, going to have a minimum of 19, one per county, and a maximum of 35. The figure they were using is 1% to 3% of the population will be buying medical marijuana. We're 6 million people in the state, so that's a lot of people. If there's only 19, there's only one or maybe even two in Hampshire County, we're talking a lot of volume. So the same thing that makes me concerned about a fast food restaurant, a block, no more, but no less, about. And then security issues, I think the law carries, I'm not aware of the security issues, but I am worried about, the dome security is big cameras moving back and forth, and big fences and those sorts of things. And you could do great, you know, banks are a good example, you could do great security and not be ugly. And pawn shops are an example of it, I think you can do great security and be really ugly. And I want it to look like a bank and not a pawn shop. The third one, this is relatively small, but has to be growing this stuff indoors, they're really high electric uses. And we've been trying to green North Hampton, so one of the thoughts is, they are the right fuel, you know, fossil fuel like everybody else does, but the extra bit of electricity that they're using because of the nature of these things, that maybe we should ask them to mitigate it. So, so what the draft is before you is thinking about, again, not touching the location, which is only allows, but dealing with all those details. Time is critical, whereas the blade signs is in order. Time's critical for this one, because otherwise, we're going to start that here. We know there's a lot of interest, a few people have come to visit us, so there's these five who got listed in Hampshire County, and many of them, I don't know the answer, are looking at North Hampton, and there's one who's listed as, as Hampton County, and they're actually looking out to be this way. You know, who knows who's really going to show up? They're now at the next stage of finding a site, so.
This is to be a closed facility, so you can't see them.
That's correct.
So the question of its proximity to schools, for instance, is probably not the same issue as it would be--
And the state actually does have some setbacks for that stuff, but yes, that's not my concern, because, because of those things. It is, just to just clear, we polled city offices, planning and building were comfortable with all locations, were to help, did express that concern. They were concerned, particularly that Main Street, that a place on Main Street might feel like a headshot. And I don't think that's true, given where the, where the Department of Health regulations are.
But do you want a closed store on Main Street that has no front, that has ladder in this?
Well, we require separate blades, so you couldn't see the product, but you could do other, you're just, we have lawyers offices downtown. You could do a storefront window. But there are issues in terms of security, you can't get in unless you have a card from the state.
Yeah. The price of land downtown's going to make that complicated, but you could have the warehouse out in industrial park, and you could have the dispensary on the--
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, the price of the land would make Main Street first floor a bit, it wouldn't necessarily make it on center quarter, some building on the second floor, you know, with the rent still.
I'm getting a little confused by, you're talking about growing and processing, but medical marijuana is, requires a prescription, right? I can't see it being any more popular than other drugs that you need prescriptions for. People like, don't run in every day to fill a prescription.
Well, you could say, Rize in Colorado, how many people got prescriptions?
But there's not as many pharmas, I mean, there's a lot more pharmacies than there would be--
Why don't they just have pharmacies sell them as a prescription drug, right? Prescription drug, right?
I think with the regulations that we have, I don't disagree with you. But because there's only going to be one or at most two of these in Hampshire County, that's very different than, you know, all the CDSs and law regulations we have.
And, and they can, they can grow and dispense in two places, but they have to be run by the same overriding--
That's correct. And it's, I don't understand the regulations in detail. You can even have a management company, I think for our purposes, if one company, if one nonprofit owns it, the person who's actually growing, it could be a management company.
Can I read this? Maybe I'll understand. Medical marijuana is a subset of medical uses and medical dispensaries, and is allowed in any facilities where new physicians offices and new dispensaries and pharmacies may be located, but not locations where medical uses and dispensaries are allowed only as a pre-existing non-conformity use, and for any growing or processing without dispensaries and any non-conformity. Now, doesn't that mean that pharmacies can sell it?
No.
Well, from our regulations, this would, but--
Who wrote this?
This is what-- I'm suggesting for us. But we don't get, I mean, the health department, state health department, as written state by regulation, we didn't repeat them, because that's the minimum score. So the state is licensed and is very close, there's lots of details that we're not going into because the state's doing it. But one, one thing is, they have all these regulations, you can't get in the building unless you have a card, that is, you're eligible. So CDS couldn't sell it.
Okay.
And they also have to be run by nonprofits.
So what you're wanting the planning--
What's the law on that?
What you want the planning board to consider is the effect on energy use and traffic?
Yeah, so let me walk you through this again, just want to give you the background. So the first part, where Franny was reading from is just the definition of what we're talking about for medical marijuana. I am suggesting the second part, we're not going with a special permit, these would be allowed by rights. But it should be site plan approval, so you get to look at those details. We're doing this, that's what 112 just says, is we're looking at these automated intermediate The third section, this partially applies to this, but also applies to everything else. We've always said for traffic mitigation, so, nothing with marijuana in particular, for traffic mitigation, you either do bricks and mortar work to address traffic issues based on your portion of flow, or you pay a payment in lieu, and we had a format for payment. There was a Supreme Court case that basically said with individual fact-based analysis. So we're changing this. The table that said we had to pay is now the maximum, it's still the right guy, the maximum, and you will have to do a fact-based analysis. Our numbers are conservative enough, at city standpoint, that I suspect in the vast majority of cases, someone will have to pay that, but we're after assessment. And you've done this already, so the Dare Hill, which is Elwood House, who didn't require the maximum, because they--
Don't think so.
I'm sorry. A restricted house.
It's a little bit of a deer.
A restricted house. Am I trying to read? So they paid a small fee because they could convince, they convinced you all, your predecessors, that a fewer percentage, a smaller percentage of people living there were commuting during lockdown. So you, you've always done that sort of assessment. So that, that section in blue, if there's a color on the top of it, rating two, is, would apply to everything, this is partially to address the court case. And we, I sent this to our attorney, he may or may not have some changes to that, but we need to do that regardless. The, the next thing is setting a fee, the traffic mitigation. So currently, we go from zero in downtown, $1,000 at the edge of downtown, 2,000 on King Street, 3,000 suburban areas. I basically suggested a King Street type model, 2,000 is the peak. Then we use, we have a table that says how much trips we expect people to generate. We need a little bit of work on this, because we don't have a lot, but the way these seem to be measured, at least at this workshop I went to, is how many people can you process per hour? And they were talking about, basically takes five weeks, after you, when you come back the second time, you're not learning, it takes five weeks per, per session. So figure for each cash register, you're going to be combinating, you know, some numbers. So we can play with the exact numbers, we can do a little more research on that, but they're highly, again, we're only charging for the one peak hour, so this isn't the entire day's use. This is between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, whatever we'd expect the most number of trips to be done at that hour, because that's what we're billing our sidewalks for. And then the next one, this is the, the main discussion, is what are the, what are the specific criteria for approval, and the site plan approval? And so what I have here is, once we begin the discussion, the hours that can be open, the fully, this, I try not to compete too much with the state, so I'm not really sure we even need these, because it's required, understand law, you know, it's in place.
Well, I think that speaks to what Ann was suggesting, that, you know, you and I hadn't talked about, that I've told about in the context, but I think that could cover, you could end up creating blank walls that way. And it could be from the interior, so there could be a complete, like, like amazing.net, for example. They put a false, you know, wall, I mean, that was a requirement in ordinance, but there's nothing there that says that they would have to do the same thing.
Well, that was the next one, though. So that's what C is about. So C is, we have security requirements, but a security requirement outside a building is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. So if an area with storefronts, you have to do storefronts, we're not trying to restrict security, but it has to be camouflaged to then consider the background, so that's why we don't--
Right, but I think the, I was, I could see that someone would interpret that, that only as it relates to security do we have to make it look like the rest of downtown.
Okay, so we can say visual.
And then one, I think for B to address what Ann was suggesting, I think would be important, because all aspects of the use, I mean, you still kind of want to have that I mean, you still kind of want to have that inviting presence if you're on Main Street, or even in an enterprise business district where we're trying to create that pedestrian vibe.
Okay, that's great. All right, so then C is sort of related, I think you're right about sort of rewriting D. See, this is more so that, again, it's the danger of security, not the point shop security. D is just sort of, you know, these typically people using activated carbon, some sort of thing to catch the smell, if I might, not only obviously smell of marijuana, but also, I assume like everything else in the world, you can buy organic marijuana and non-organic marijuana, to want to catch pesticides and pesticides and whatever else that is in there. And then the electricity use, I did fifty percent, sort of arbitrary. I asked Chris Mason, who was our energy officer, to do a little research, it's a waiting here, bad, but trying to understand, is electric use for some difference? What I want is that it's easily measurable.
So where was my point?
There you go.
I get E, or the intent of E, but isn't that singling out, I mean, what if you're a high-end nursery or a greenhouse that requires a lot of electricity? We're not requiring them to provide.
Right, right. Yeah, I guess you're absolutely right, I think some of this is, these are among the highest electricity uses per square foot, other than manufacturing, obviously, which is larger. And frankly, because the state is limiting the number of these things, the volume of business that they're doing is so much, they're not going to even push back. I guess that's part of the reality. For, if you're doing, those of you who have been here forever, Montgomery Rose, you know, that was marginal business. If you made them mitigate half their use, they would have faded a lot sooner. That's not, this is not, they're not going to play a kind of, so some of it is to that reason. I don't disagree with you, you know, is that true? So that's it, in terms of.
Well, now that we've sort of discussed the order of things, what do you think?
Any other comments? Does anybody from the public want to speak on this issue?
One thing, Wayne, that we didn't talk about was, in a situation where they're making new construction, what kind of parking ratio would be necessary? Even if it's, you know, for expansion for central businesses or business, so if there's that much volume, I mean, I don't know that, I guess central business doesn't matter, because we don't require parking, but for entrance businesses.
Yeah, I don't know the answer, we can come up with numbers consistent with volume. In accounting, in the districts which we don't require parking anyway, entrance and G I, I wouldn't want to require parking for this. The districts we do require parking, we could figure out this, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that, because it has to be sort of a quick turnkey, that there'll be existing facilities, but you can see maybe expansion.
I will say that while these are very high traffic businesses, for a way of traffic mitigation, you don't stay there for long. So the parking, I don't expect to be the same as something we stay.
Is it a drive-through?
Along with your sex pack, right?
I prefer to do Texas drive-through.
Liquor stores. Yeah, right. Tortillas.
Drive-through gun stores.
It's a wrong comparison, it's like CBS drive-through.
I just, I think we're treating this as if it's going to be a retail pot-selling operation rather than a prescription drug-selling operation. But I just think there's a enormous difference in magnitude, from the retail side. Unless they can only sell, unless you can only buy a supply for one day at a time, or something like that.
No, you can buy a lot, what people said in Colorado, they pointed out that Colorado's a little different than, I think the figure is three hundred dispensaries in Denver alone, but that the average person is buying a two-month supply. So, you know, again, it may be different here.
I think these rules don't work. I think it's going to be hard with the charges that people have to have and the registration that they have to have in order to do it. I think a lot of us feel happy with what it turned out from what we stayed.
One of the things, and I know this legislation may change, is one of the concerns for a lot of people is, at this point, we can't use a credit card. Because, you know, that a lot of considers the drug, and so the creditor companies could lose their assets. And so, one of the recent security issues, which is a big deal, is, you know, a lot of cash has gone through that. And that may change, and a lot of people follow this, are very optimistic, but it hasn't changed.
Well, originally, there was a discussion about the banking system not doing this in a framework, how has that been solved?
Well, that's why, yeah, you can't, you can't get traditional bank finances, I've been involved, and you can't use a credit card.
Could you help me understand E, where that came from? You know, it's, and how it isn't arbitrary, like when you're saying, like a Montgomery Rose operation, you wouldn't assess it because they couldn't afford it. Just help me understand how this is a sort of inequality.
So, in an ideal world, what we would have done, is what an early draft did for this said, is, figure out what the, if your dispensary looks and feels like CBS, figure out how much electricity CBS uses per square foot, figure out how much use does these use per square foot, and they should be mitigating the difference. That becomes really hard to do, and so that's why we did fifty percent, this sort of arbitrary rule of use. It's a new use, so we're treating it differently, and so that's part of the reason we're trying to mitigate. You know, the city's now doing a lot of things across the board, trying to encourage, and things you guys have done for the P V.
This is coming out of Sustainable North Hampton?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of fair.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but most greenhouses depend on the sun, and pot operations traditionally have been in attics and in basements where there is no sun. So I don't see necessarily pot-growing operations that are legal and, I don't know, maybe you can't see them. Yeah, I don't understand why electricity use can be so intense, because.
Because it's a security issue, because it's really easy to break into it, not just that we do it, it's really easy to break into a greenhouse. You got a thin barrier, it's pretty easy to get to it.
Well, it's not a maximum.
Yeah, but that's the issue, you can't do it, yeah. Because it's pretty easy to break into, so most of these are going to be warehouses and pro.
Have you not watched Weeds? Have you not watched the show Weeds?
I suppose.
Weeds.
Weeds.
TV program.
I recommend it, just the first couple.
So are you looking for a nod from us to run on the right track?
Well, I'd actually like to vote to introduce it, you're C again, obviously, when we come back for public hearings and discussions. Just because of timeline, we've talked about a couple, you know, mending B and C. Yeah. And then the parking ratio. The visual appearance of the parking. Oh, and actually, we need to do a little more work on traffic generation, that was sort of a very quick backdown, so those are the three things, right?
If by any chance you get any more specific information on the electricity use, then you can plant that within your scope.
Yeah, makes sense.
Any issues?
I have an issue, I just want to go back and summarize where we started with Randy reading the definition. Basically, this business use can happen anywhere that would have accommodated a medical use. And that, so in that sense, it's, we're not making any brand change to zone.
That's right.
Sort of a business use.
And that's why, someone, one of the things that's considered evil in the zoning world is to use definitions to create the rules. That's why we're just saying, here's what it is, it's allowed exactly to the table, use regulations allow it.
What's the next highest percentage of mitigation for back to E? Is there, just for a point of reference?
Can you talk a little louder, please?
Asking what the next highest percentages, as far as required mitigation.
This electricity?
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be anything, I'm trying to get a better sense from Chris.
But do we have any, like, do we?
Currently, don't, no.
No.
We do a lot of things for traffic mitigation, but for electricity mitigation, we don't.
So this would be the first.
It's, it's, you see, it just often tastes funny, you're not too charged fifty percent just because you can, because it won't be put that. That sets the wrong sort of precedent. It's also because, and there were really high electricity uses, and so.
Yeah, I get that, but then, but then.
You're looking for a number that has more fact than that's.
It's grounded, it's grounded, you know, and it seems somewhat arbitrary, and again, if there's going to be so few dispensaries, that they're going to just say yes to whatever we, whatever criteria we lay out, that still shouldn't, I don't think, we shouldn't take advantage of that situation. It should be, it should be applicable across the board, or close to it, so that if there are other operations like a Montgomery Rose or something, it's, I would think it's more in keeping with this criteria.
Yeah, well, I mean, frankly, I'd love us to do that sometime. Who's using more out of their class? You know, I don't want to stop someone who's making, you know, cement, because cement uses enormous electricity, but I wouldn't mind stopping someone who's wasting using cement.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
But I'm in the same framework, even kind of wrestling about it being a part of traffic mitigation. In that case, we're asking them to help us as the city provides services. We're providing, you know, responsible for roads and traffic, so that's our service. I don't feel like we're a utility provider, so.
But, oh, I see what you're saying.
So that's why this one feels, I'm kind of feeling awkward about it, too.
But we have, for example, in Sustainable North Hampton, one of our goals, and remember, one of our things we look at in issuing permits, is to reduce our carbon footprint by fifty percent by twenty fourteen.
I'm not opposed to the idea that businesses by their class should waste money and not get penalized for it, even if they can afford to, because in the long run, it is an infrastructure production issue. But I'm sort of, this is the, we're setting precedent here, this is the first step in that, and I'd rather it be a whole policy that does that, rather than this first one. I agree with you, they'll be raised, not in greenhouses, because it's, they're going to build facilities to do them, and the security will have them, you know, used to later.
I guess that's the reason I stood out when I went to that workshop, because there is an option, you could do a greenhouse, but most people aren't going to because security issues, so I'm more and less sympathetic when there's an alternative way to do it, I'm more sympathetic when there's an alternative.
Did you discuss, was this discussed at the workshop? Did other people have a way of dealing with it, were there other members that were?
We didn't get to that, P V C does have a working group, it's working, this is really more just the educational side of what's happened in Colorado, what's happened in other states.
I mean, it sort of sounds like what you're saying is, they are actually like a cement company, in that they use more electricity than most companies, but that's, but so then I think that suggests that if you're going to do this for them, you should do it for cement companies as well.
The difference may be that the cement company doesn't necessarily have an option, whereas.
Oh, then they do have an option.
They do, again, it may not be practical, the public health department's things, but one could do this as a guarantee.
Or could they use solar?
And that's certainly why I'm not suggesting anything about heating, because I think that's not an option for heating. Where electricity is all about grow lights, which you can do.
Looks like that needs a little more data.
Yeah.
I have a question about, is it just North Hampton that is going to be a target area for this thing?
No, they're looking over the state, you know, and so it's funny, of course.
No, I meant in Hampshire County.
Well, definitely Amherst, definitely East Hampton. Lots of the hill towns are worried about, I can't believe they really have a chance of getting it. I mean, it's pretty unlikely that something will go in Ashfield. But I think North Hampton, East Hampton, and Amherst are certainly credible.
The flip side of that is, if we were talking about any other kind of business, we would be begging for it, you know?
I want us to come here, I'm very much prepared for this.
Right, to me, it creates, you know, from the food business sense, it creates traffic, you know, it creates coming and going.
Yeah, but you know, I think the traffic is good, and I very much want us to get one dispensary, if not two. But just like we make McDonald's mitigate the traffic, you know, I want them to mitigate your impact, it's not to say we don't want these uses.
I'm actually more concerned about the traffic than having the energy. I think we do have to provide traffic accommodation, whereas utilities will go up and they'll try to fix that when they have to.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you're uncomfortable, you can drop it, this really does come from the sustainable plan saying, how do we reduce the carbon footprint?
You've been in conversation with other communities doing planning for this, and obviously, talked to some people about what kind of local ordinances they have, but is this a new idea? Is this?
I think so, I mentioned a couple people who were sort of intrigued by it, but hadn't come up with their past conversations.
Well, we've got Sustainable North Hampton, and that may be one of the kind of focus that.
Well, and I'm interested more from the policy point of view of expanding the idea to be relevant to other business types.
Right, I mean, I'm not opposed to that, but I think if we're setting precedent here, then the next business that comes, you know, Montgomery Rose Point Two, are they going to be, you know, burdened with the same criteria? Or not burdened, but are they, you know, are they going to have to meet the same criteria? And if not, why not?
To that point, I mean, could we not survey the type of business greenhouse, and come up with some metric that's a baseline or a common denominator for that, and then go above that? That would feel better than just pulling something out, and I don't know if there's enough of those.
Actually, then, you could look at it as if it were a greenhouse, except because it has special conditions. So greenhouse levels, one thing, except that it has special conditions become a safety, and it can balance out the cost of the safety versus the cost of the electricity. If there's so much, so many square foot of greenhouse would use, and it chooses to go with a covered one for security purposes, because it's an unusual business, then that's a choice that's made, and you have some basis for making the electricity charge.
But what if you are a, say, computer center, data center, where you've got a half acre of servers underneath the roof, and you have no alternative as far as the construction of the building, but you require a tremendous amount of electricity. But because we have no choice in how you construct a building, then you're not beholden to this criteria, that just seems.
But in the same vein of that, I mean, if we were looking to bring in a new server farm, and trying to build in the infrastructure to support them, I would say we would definitely talk about the energy usage.
That's what I'm saying, I think it should be consistent.
Yeah, I think in the reverse, I mean, you know, having been the applicant before you for Florence Fields, one of the pitches we made to you, at the cost of forty thousand dollars for us, was that Florence Fields would be that hero of this, and we said, that's how we're meeting the Sustainable North Hampton part, is that we are going to mitigate. And it may not be the same as a set standard, but it'd be nice if people started doing that, and saying, yeah, I'm going to try to do that sort of thing.
Well, I'm not hearing that anyone's opposed to this, it just opposed to doing this arbitrarily.
Well, the other reason, frankly, to lead at this stage, is if we keep it in, and you're not satisfied during the public hearing process, you're going to just drop it, if you couldn't add it, so let's leave it in, and, you know, if you're not comfortable, then we'll come back to you in a month.
At the moment, I'm missing the metric for how you determine traffic allowable usage? There's an engineering document that did you.
So the I T. I T doesn't exist for medical marijuana.
So how are we going to calculate the traffic for this?
So we're trying to figure out, I mean, again, this is based on a very quick assessment of what the guy from Colorado said, which is, they process basically twelve people per hour per cash register. And sort of thinking, okay, so that's twelve people per hour per cash register, with account number cash registers, some for employees.
Do they count another cash register?
Well, that would be what someone comes for per, you know, if you come in and say, I want to have two cash registers, the traffic will simply be higher than if you do one cash register. So we can't, for different uses, we can't buy restaurants by tables or by square footage, so it's not unreasonable to count by that kind of thing. And we can see.
If they're very busy, they'll add another cash register.
And we can see what else, I mean, again, this.
The mitigation is still the same.
What if there's a cash register, the mitigation would be more.
It would go up, the more cash registers you have.
You mean after the fact?
I mean after the fact, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, so I think, I mean, the part we do more research on is for California and for Colorado, and I guess Washington. You know, there may be little I T studies for those places, it's not, it's not been published in I T.
But because it's not published, this is new to everybody, so we're getting our hands around it, but we should have more to go by than that guy in Colorado.
Well, that's why I said it's sort of a marker for you.
I think this is sort of similar to the signage ordinance, or the blade sign ordinance.
Yeah.
Traffic's what it says it's going to be, maybe we do need those four foot blade signs to direct everybody to.
I would not, I would vote against recommending this to East Hampton, this is.
Because of the additional work that's required on what we've seen, or?
Sort of have to make, you could ground you in it.
You've been waiting to use that since you said it.
What's the timeline on this in terms of the state?
So they're, you know, they're taking applications for the next phase in the next month or so, they have the exact time here, but in January, they're talking about announced. And people are now lining up, some people already have a building lined up for a lease, and some are now doing.
Some towns have said no.
Some towns have said no, which in some, amortoring backfires, which is the states more likely allow you to grow your own marijuana if you don't have the facility in your community. So you may sometimes lose one control. But that's the recent time, you know, so I'm critical, I'm hoping to go tell you to go forward, right?
When, just in the fifty percent thing, could, and you've been to the hearing, and you know a lot more about it than I know just from the newspaper, but, could someone meet the criteria of the state and really operate as a greenhouse, or would they need to be able to have a commercial operation that is enclosed, that is hydroponic? I mean, could it really be done, I guess I'm asking, is there really an? I, I guess I'm asking, is there really an alternative or is it really only, I mean, to meet all the criteria?
My understanding, and someone will probably be asked for this, is it's doable, it's probably not doable in the state's hundred and twenty day window. Because you'd really be talking about major retrofit, you couldn't even do this in greenhouses. You'd be doing a lot of major retrofits. And making it use thicker black silos, whatever the process is.
So you couldn't even with perimeter security?
The way it was presented by both the attorneys and this place in Colorado is the cost for doing that wouldn't make it worthwhile. Technically, it's doable, you wouldn't, you wouldn't wanna go.
So you're looking for approval to move this forward. You've identified three or four areas which we have questions on in, in general. Don't have the specifics yet, but we wanna move it forward so you can get ahead of the January date. So we just would move forward and go out to public comment. I mean, the public would be engaged and we have another opportunity to change it at that time, if it's still in.
Right, and things like the electricity use is easy. If you don't like it, you can just ditch it. Things like the traffic mediation, we're gonna have to find a number, whatever it is. Like, so the one I heard you, biggest concern about electricity and that's the easiest to kill. Maybe the second biggest one, you know, Carolyn's comment about the, the visual piece, I think it's the easiest to address and park is easier to dress. And the, the counting, just maybe that's the hardest work for us.
But you would revise this based on our comments tonight and we would bring it back with public comment?
That's right.
I think just to, to say again on E, on the fifty percent, it would be easy to just eliminate it next time. But I, I don't know that, speaking personally, I want to eliminate it. I think this is an opportunity to have something in there. But I don't wanna rush it through and if, if it comes through at fifty percent and there's pushback and so we just get rid of it, then it might be an opportunity lost. You know, this might be a, a situation we can take advantage of as long as we are consistent, you know, with, with what may be coming down the line.
And have put in.
Right.
There's something there written about, how many, how many kilowatts per square foot or some, some way modifying it.
That's the question I asked Chris Mason to research.
So, so that other companies that weren't growing marijuana, but maybe using a lot of electricity would also be rewarded for not using more electricity. Aside from the power supply.
Using this ICE traffic studies, I don't know much about electricity, but I don't know if there's an equivalent application. There's some book I opened up that says, here's the expected electricity use for square foot, I just don't know.
I mean, I don't, I don't have to handle those products. I mean, we have, we talked about server farm, or a hospital, or a Coca-Cola plant, or all these different operations that are open all the time with a lot of electricity. It just seems.
The electric company sends me a little plot that says, you know, now they're only doing that for residential and that's an easy category. And I could love to think that we might arrive at a point where it would be more nuanced with the kind of operation.
What, what I just wanted is that the energy committee is looking at is not the, the cap piece, the cost piece, but just requiring disclosure. So when you buy a house, you may say, or rent a house. This house is renting for twelve hundred dollars a month, this one's for fourteen hundred dollars a month. Fourteen hundred dollars a month using no electricity, the other one is, you know, energy. Uh, it's that sort of where they've been focused so far.
Okay, any more discussion? Good, so looking for a motion to move this forward. So. Second agenda, Allen Taylor, opposed, change of vote. Next up is design standards for seven plus units.
Um, so I, you all, this is a follow-up to the adoption of the suburban residential district zoning changes. And, um, you know, I, I guess the question and the issue on the table is, um, how do you wanna proceed moving on? Just discussing what kinds of things do you think should be incorporated? Do you want us to do some rough cut of possible changes and come back to you without any? We don't have anything for you to look at now, but we wanted to start the conversation, maybe get some ideas from you all about what you think might be appropriate based on the public comment about concerns that, uh, for those projects that are gonna be ten or more units.
Can we have clarity? I mean, one of the first things to do is to provide clarity on the public concerns, then who pushed it over that way?
Well, so.
I remember going through all of that, not how it ended up.
In particular, so the impetus of the conversation really had to do with a couple of plots in, um, around the Henry Street neighborhood or on Henry Street. And probably a comparison of some projects that people felt were not so, uh, did not fit into the fit so well. So the one is, um, there's a fourteen house townhouse project on Hockenham Road that is all on unit public discussions. And, um, so I think that sort of became the visual, um, identity of what's wrong and what could go wrong if the same number of units were put anywhere else in that neighborhood. And, um, but after that came up, there were, there was, there was some change to the design standards required, not just for larger construction, but for all units. So they had to be compatible with the neighborhood in the parking arrangements, the layout of the parking, breaking up parking, um, the, the way the structures were oriented and the covered porches. And, um, also the driveway locations for, um, these construction projects. So, and, and sort of going back and looking at, as Henry Street as an example, is half the size in terms of acreage of that Hockenham Road example. So you couldn't necessarily just take the fourteen units that were approved on Hockenham Road and do the same fourteen units on the one acre personal Henry Street. And it just wouldn't be feasible, particularly given the new standards that are required to break up parking and maintain space and step back.
Those, those design standards we put in place in response to the rise of issue first came up.
Right.
So, sorry if I'm jumping the gun, but so why was that not satisfactory? Like, what specifically was not satisfactory about that to the folks who were upset about this?
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain. And I think the idea was that, um, perhaps there need to be more focused discussion about large projects. Because, um, there may be other ways to, or additional design criteria for these structures themselves. And let me just back up one and, and, um, remind you all that on top of those standards at the, at the tail end of this conversation in front of the city council. The counselors incorporated another provision for projects of ten or more units that required, and it's focused more on infrastructure and the site. That the standards you use for development had to be consistent with subdivision regulations. So that means site, the construction materials, the method of construction, um, the types of things that you're incorporating into the site.
But not plenty more approval?
Well, these would all trigger plenty more approval anyway, because anything over two thousand square feet automatically is site planned.
That's not the same as the.
It's not a subdivision approval, right?
But, but these are, we're all talking about special permits besides. So even the moratorium is over, these would be special permits. So obviously, we're site plan approval, it's conditioning. For these things, you will have the ability to say no to a project.
Right, and it, it is special permit at this point, which it hadn't been before. So, um, I, you know, and there are, we're not gonna have a lot of large, you know, ten unit projects in North Hampton. But we do know of a couple of sites in the residential districts that are moving in that direction. The whole redevelopment of the Shaw's Motel site, um, will likely be, um, ten or more units.
When the tear down moratorium is over, when?
Right.
Was twenty one, that, that didn't matter, that could be twenty one if that was that many?
I, I, um, I don't know if it was that many actually, based on the acreage. I thought it was less than that. But still, they have, there's some number of units that, well, there's some number of units that are on the site, so I don't know how much.
Let me add one thing, in terms of the question about the due diligence piece. I think there was a wide diversity of opinion out there as to how much we should have design standards. And you all were very cautious about going too far in design standards. And at least some of the pushback, and I can't tell you what is true, how much the pushback, was they wanted more detailed design standards. And so at least for some people, the compromise was, oh, a certain number, you know, they did a good job above, they want more detailed. But again, I don't have some minority opinion or material.
But it wasn't clear either whether it was architectural standards or not, or an issue about massing or total volume. I mean, I think in some cases, it could just be, um, discomfort with having anything that's more than seven units.
Well, besides design, how does define, I think it's about cars, not besides traffic, but just what the cars look like and how it's been done. Which you guys did a good job in the design side, parking in the driveways and all this. Yeah, which again, we partially get things done already, we partially get some subdivision regs, but.
Are, are we talking only essentially about Ward Three?
No, this, this affects, um, our residential city. Yeah, so, um, Ward Three is not the only ward that has our residential city. So our residential city surrounds downtown North Hampton, so.
But actual.
Actual lots that could be developed out like that.
Chapel Street is the U R C.
That's U R B, actually.
I think the pushback was certainly a primary word.
Right.
You know, and, and you know, this concern that came up in the process in terms of one big site is the Smith College, Fort Hill, like the Lyman State. Which actually happens to be, um, Ward Three anyway.
It's not partial anymore for?
I think Lyman is the boundary.
It, it just seems like we had design standards for the city as a whole. And then we had some pushback on, in this area for this size project, which we made modifications for, which were generally accepted. And it went through and there was just some hesitancy about that area and those size projects that they just pushed back again. Everything is good except for this, still don't feel right, send it back, but really don't know why. And so now we're left with fixing something, but we don't know, does it, does it really need fixing or what is it, what is our charge? What are we, what are we trying to do?
Because they didn't, really many of them want anything to be done there.
Oh, I understand that.
And that's why this is so complicated.
So just, there's three broad approaches, I have any details? One is in essence, do nothing, you know? The second is very measurable standards, like you sort of have already, you know, more measurable standards that I could go through and easily know if I meet or don't meet. And the third, because it's a special permit, is this, is not the measurable standards, but enough to give you feedback. That, you know, whenever we look at a building, we're gonna look at how the building fits the neighborhood in much more detail than existing special permit.
At the moment, three sounds like the most appealing, but when we're actually sitting here doing one, it's going to not feel that way. Cause I want, I want criteria to know where I'm along with on the.
Well, I mean, one of the things that we could do is sort of look at, um, you know, look at maybe some pieces that were missing or that you all had decided on the first cut not to, um, undertake. And then, and figure out, you know, a couple of ways to, um, to potentially incorporate something. And it's not, and it clearly, the, the charges and then you have to make a change, but it's, I think, to investigate. Is this, do you feel that there is enough in place for those special permit approval, um, criteria? Or does it need a little bit of tweaking, or does it need a lot of tweaking?
Another effort we're doing, which may or may not be useful for this, but, so we committed to do, work with the neighborhood and sort of think about what are the important character fund features for the Fort Hill campus, for the Lyman State. Which may or may not end up resulting in, in, in regulations. And so we could do that kind of approach, just go, you know, go back and ask us other people who opposed us to sort of say, okay, let's not talk about density because the zone talks about what's allowed. So let's talk about if that happened, what are the character funding features that would be respected?
I think I'd be more inclined to do something like that where we, we, if we're gonna add more measurable standards, then A, do nothing, or B, um, further restrict the leverage that we have with a special permit. You know, to me, the special permit is broad range and that gives us a lot of latitude. But if, if we, if we confine the language in the special permit to say, well, we mean this, A, B, and C, that seems to unnecessarily limit, limit us. I think the language is purposely vague in a special permit to give us some leeway, because we don't have any leeway in site plan approval.
I think it's true, I think it'd be too vague now, I think it'd be, I like the one.
Well, there were some, um, new standards put into place in this package that weren't in the special permit criteria previously. So I don't think it's gonna be the same level of vagueness as what's on the books for other special permits. But the, the question is, should we add, you know, it sounds like you don't wanna be too specific because the vagueness helps in the sense that if something might just, you know, despite the best efforts for design. If it really feels like it's not functioning on that property, then the answer is denial.
Right.
And you still wanna have that leverage because you don't, you know.
Right, I don't want an applicant to say, you can't deny because here's the criteria and I've met it all. Even though it doesn't feel right to the board, I don't wanna be forced to have to approve it. You know, because what used to be, I just think we'd lose leverage with more specific language. But if you go back to the, the whoever's pushing back and find out what, what is it, what, what do you wanna see? And we come up with one or two more design standards that we're all comfortable with and we don't think is too specific or limiting, then I don't see the harm in that.
I'm hesitant to send it off to do work with architectural design standards that have to do with, um, work of the neighborhood. Though I don't think that, from what I heard of the discussion, that wasn't the problem. And I don't think that'll be the solution.
Well, right, we purposely try to stay away from that specific design, you know, architectural design standards.
So, so think of three potential standards. Design standards like with downtown, architectural standards, more sort of form-based, code-type standards. And not what the building looks like and what the appearance is, but how close the street is, how far back is the layout. And then the equivalent for everything else, parking. And you, you did sum this to the parking and the perimeter rules, but the same thing in a bigger scale, you know? You know, what's the goal for hiding parking or not hiding parking? So it, it sounds like you wouldn't want the first one, the architecture, but maybe you'd want the layout, the form, and then the buildings and the site.
I just feel, I mean, I feel like we addressed that, we went into so much detail on that, which I was very happy to do. I think that those are really good changes, so I'm, I'm kind of at a loss as to what more.
These could be different for a bigger piece of property. So think of the whole Lyman State. You know, you gave a lot of feedback in a relatively small property. But is the vision for Lyman, I mean, you know, a block, you know, that matches the neighborhood to the south? You know, a block where the blocks are one hundred feet long? Or is the vision more of a campus type of here? We don't really have any guidance to give somebody for that.
But to go back, and I think I agree with both Mark and Jen, I mean, you know, we put these things in place and it, it, you know. I, I feel like we might be leaning towards, overreacting to a very specific circumstance criteria and react to that. But then that's gonna have, that's gonna ripple out over, you know, who knows what. And, and I think you're right, every time you say what you don't want, by default, you're also saying what you do want. And I, I don't know, I, I gotta go back to your, of your three choices. I would probably choose the first one and do nothing and see how this works. Uh, uh, cause I would just be, I would be hesitant to, to overreact to like just a, what is, what, as I recall the conversation following, you know. A very particular and a very specific circumstance that people were concerned about.
Will the city council pass this zoning thing without provision that?
It's passed. It's passed with a moratorium. Well, because there's a moratorium until July of next year. And the more, the purpose of the moratorium is to have that further conversation, whatever that conversation ends up being. But to give time for there to be more discussion and then it will sunset, that the moratorium will go away and the ordinance stays.
And I think in good faith, we need to not do, not choose to do nothing right now, prepare to. they're trying to figure out.
Right, I'm certainly okay with getting more feedback. I agree with Jen, it took us two and a half years, whatever, to go through that process, and I thought we addressed, at first pass, I thought we addressed those particular concerns, but if we didn't, and more information was brought forward, and that we feel the need to respond to, that's fine. If not, we can just say, you know what, I think we're happy with what we did, and do nothing.
So maybe, does it make sense to put it on an agenda as a public meeting to have and to get feedback from people who are concerned about this? I mean, because I don't really know, I don't, I hear what you're saying about Lyman, but that's not where the pushback came from. The pushback came from the Ward 3 properties.
I think it certainly makes sense to put this in a later meeting and reach out to the neighborhood, whether that neighborhood, whether that's a formal planning board meeting, or a different kind of workshop or something.
Sure, whichever, yeah. Just some opportunity to get the feedback, to really understand what people want. Because if Anne's right, that this is really just, we want to block any development, I understand that on an emotional level, but that's something we can address.
Anybody else? Have enough direction? Okay. Last up, subdivision standards, provisions. We got an executive summary.
Yeah, we didn't want to give you the detailed languages. First, subdivision, do you think zoning is the sexiest thing? Subdivision regs are really boring. So we just wanted to sort of go through in the big picture. So we haven't revised our, we haven't had a subdivision at all since recession. We have subdivision going forward.
Well, it was already in process, but yet we haven't.
I mean, state hospital, that's a little different creature, but.
Kendrick's gonna pick me the last one, but that's already.
Right, great. So our subdivision regs are a little bit out of date. They have a lot of really good things in them, and they're out of date in two things. One is just, some things have changed. The other, I think, has been a sea change in DPW. So things that DPW was very resistant on eight years ago, when we last did our regulations, they didn't have much more support than today. So we want, want to take advantage of that and come back for improvement on this. And so things which were out of date, just as, we have markers. So we require basically the curbs in every site, and the water gets channeled into a catch basin, and then goes out usually to the mission. And we don't want the old country drainage where the water just runs off, because that's creates erosion. But, so when we last did the rules eight years ago, whatever it was, we said, we're considered low impact at all. We drop the curbs, you run the water off, and you do rain yards and treat it. And we thought, that's great, you know, we're really doing cutting edge. And all the developers looked at it and said, I don't want to figure this out. What I like about the subdivision regs is it's a cookbook. Even if it's a bad cookbook, I know exactly what it takes to get it through. And so even though you were allowing LID, we were one of the first communities to allow it, not a single person took advantage of it, they'd have to figure this out. And so we're trying to get to the next step and start talking about LID. So that's the big one, and that's one of the big places where both the standards have changed, we now actually have other people to plagiarize from, and DPW is totally on board for that, so that's the first one. Although we may actually not find a lot of LID takers, just so you know, because it's really easy to do an LID in a suburban area with 150 feet of frontage. Not that a lot of our subdivisions are 50 feet of frontage, you can't just slide it. So that's one big one. The energy piece, again, you know, state and local commission is thinking about, what are the things that we can do? And we're limited, subdivision control does not give us a lot of tools. But for Kensington Estates, you guys pushed them to think about the roads, so they were due east-west and north-south, so you'd get best solar layout. For the state hospital, we've begun being flexible about the street trees, thinking how do we do street trees that don't shade the PVs? And at the energy commission, we've begun thinking about LID lights. So sort of thinking about all those things. Other than when we hired Nelson Nygaard to do the Main Street, King Street Tourette, one of the things that they said is, why do we have streetlights that light the cars where they're driving? We really want streetlights for intersection, crosswalks, street jewelry, and for sidewalks. And LEDs fit that, because it's a much more direct light. So those things generally for energy. The areas, the sea change, this may also be sort of a work in progress, so I would expect number four to be the hardest negotiation in this process, is thinking about, what are the actual standards? We've done a lot in terms of granite curbs and concrete sidewalks, but we haven't done a lot in terms of what's the curve return? So you can imagine, the sharper the curve, the closer the intersection is to a right angle, the shorter the pedestrian crossing distance is from one speed to another. But the harder it is to send a fire truck or a bus or a truck. And so finding that right balance there, I think, again, because we had a long discussions, we have pretty narrow streetways in our, in a lot of communities, but we may still want to play with that, but maybe some opportunities to allow even narrower streets. So that's the big, again, that's really most complicated. And then, for those of you who are my age or older, you may remember the old days when we're comfortable walking in the streets. And then, as cars got faster and crazier and more suburban areas, we began putting granite curbs, and so cars could go up the curb and concrete sidewalks. So there's this whole shared streets concept, which says, or, sorry, which says, we do all this stuff because the cars are going ever faster. If we can physically get, if we can both physically and in terms of queues, get cars to drive slower, then maybe we can put people back in the streets. Think about Smith College campus, where there's a maintenance vehicle going down the sidewalk, you don't worry about getting killed, including deferring to, what are the equivalent ways we can do that? And we had a meeting with DPW, they're actually surprisingly supportive of it. These are, we're not actually low volume, I don't even, I don't even have that sense, but it's, you know, it's a very different concept. You're dealing with some real challenges with snow removal. A lot of stuff is easy, but that snow removal is really a challenge.
Speaking of that, on a totally separate subject, but somewhat related, that New People's United Bank that opened, there was going to be a, for a stretch for the length of the property, bollards or something to protect pedestrian, and that hasn't gone up yet, is it still going to happen?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't seen that they asked for their CEO to ask for.
Mr. Temper's, yeah.
Yeah, but they have to grow.
Yeah, you got the grand opening. So.
I think so, yeah. I'm sure.
I'm curious when I drive by, just what, I'm waiting for whatever it's going to be, to come up, just to see what people make of it.
For the cycle track, right?
Right, right. So from Barrett, taking Wright and the King, there was going to be like some demountable something for snow plowing in the winter, but we'll keep the bicycles or pedestrians out for the season.
Sometimes it'll work, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So the sixth of the list of private stuff that's of least interest to all of us, but it's really the details, the stuff that, you know, when DPW's out in trenches and things don't quite work, what are they finding?
Don't undersell soil borings, do you?
I'm sure you're, that's really sexy.
Got a word right in it.
Borings even.
Well, you know, because I was, the new office building, and you have the clearing, you know, we worked on getting a drainage area associated with that building, and, you know, they're standing water there now. So, and that is exactly the reason, I think, I mean.
We find consistently, the engineers are really good, looking at soil borings, figuring out the structural, the weight bearing capacity of those, and maybe not so good in trying to figure out where the groundwater elevation is. So that, those are the kinds of things there. The other one that we're still exploring, where we do legal authority to do, but I think there's a big one, is under 4F, that's my first question. This is sort of thinking about how big a block size is. You know, a street that is 250 feet long is incredibly walkable, and 400 feet in a campus context is reasonable. A street that's 1,000 feet between streets just feels like a, you know, a long way to walk, you know, quarter mile. And so thinking about block size, the problem is, because we don't have big, 100 acre sites to get developed, we're more likely to have a state hospital type approach, where maybe you have a longer block, but you have a sidewalk that goes to the middle of the block. So at least for pedestrians and dog walkers, it feels shorter. And so we're going to talk about that.
Like older than block, you're doing.
Well, New York City, it's sort of, you know, it seems to be.
One, yeah, I mean, the one.
Yeah, I mean, New York's, New York's 250 feet by 500.
By 500?
Yeah.
I was thinking of 500.
And most cities, New York's, most cities have 250 feet short and 400 feet long. So in urban contexts, you know, 350 or 400 feet makes it. You know, we have lower volumes, it's hard to justify that shorter thing, but thinking about sort of what are those numbers for doing.
So from us, are you looking for us to pick which one we want to dive into first, or do you have a preference?
Well, I think we want to do this comprehensively. This is an easier process in the sense that only the planning board has to approve this at the end. You have to have public hearings, listen to comments. I want to see if there's anything here that you hate, things that you love, and if things were missing. Then you get, you're likely to come back to in a couple of months in more detail. This is sort of in our first cut, what are we missing, you know? What are the things?
Yeah, just as an example of the, under the shared streets, it goes back to what Wayne was saying earlier, that for LID, that we're encouraging developers to look at different ways of doing construction, but they don't want to entertain that if it's not in the standards, or it requires a waiver, or if it's not been down. So we suggested many, many times, for the north campus at Village Hill, that we should be doing some alternative design, because it's supposed to be a village. And they're reticent to do that, because there's nothing on paper that says they can. And so to the extent that we do work through these things, you know, pretty, at a good, at a steady pace, then potentially, the next time a subdivision comes in, which I think probably will be there before anywhere else, we'll have, you know, some other criteria by which the applicants can follow.
I mean, I don't know that any one jumps out more than another for me, but some of these look, look interesting. I mean, to, I don't want to say they're boring, but some of them, I'd be interested to see what kind of public input, how interesting it is to anybody else, but.
Are these sorts of things being measured against sustainable North Hampton standards?
In concept, center again, isn't detailed enough, certainly walkability, so that smaller blocks, I mean, to, nowhere does it say get rid of left turn lights, but it certainly says, you know, design streets for all modes. I would say that best street friendly one, maybe the energy one, is pretty consistent. I would say that one's just really under addressed.
Well, the other thing, though, if we're talking about narrowing streets and all, the options, it also reduces, you know, street islands back.
Right. Right, and stormwater, and getting, one of the, that's appealing to me, that best street friendly streets, is you all in the last 10 years have made our subdivisions much better, and have really visually gone, but at the cost of making more expensive developers. I think there's some opportunities here, we actually might lower the cost for housing and making things better as well.
Okay, so do you need anything from us?
No, it's when, you know, so keep going, and, yeah, you'll come back with us, and we'll just jump right in. And it sounds like we're going to have opportunity this fall, but when to do that? This one's probably a slower process. We're doing, you know, we're right extended on the month before we send it to DPW, and we want to get feedback from them. Please, please back to me.
So you're actually talking about? Clarifying with detail, the options that a developer can use in order to get something approved. So if I wanted to put in recessed tree boxes, then there would be parameters that I knew if I put it in that way, it would help me with my stormwater.
Right.
And you would give a proof?
All right, I think just like the design standards with claring, you know, everything's easier with claring, with, when it's ambiguous, either people don't want to go through the trouble, or they're not sure, so it drives up the cost because of hedging or something. And I think if we can be clear and still meet the goals that we've set up for ourselves.
And just to be clear, some of these, we giving developers an option, like shared streets, we probably wouldn't require, we tell people they could do it. Some might be required in terms of smaller diameter curb radius. We might just say, you know, you can't have a curb that's greater than 25 feet radius, whatever that is. And some are, and some are easier for us, you know, things like the shared streets, there's a lot of examples around the country now of shared streets, but almost all of them come from developers. We haven't been able to find a good stand, a good regulatory standard.
Well, and as the person who thinks about those a lot, I'm beginning to think that they're not all the way cut out. It's almost like I'm beginning to think that in practicality, you can't do, you know, but it's, it's a great concept, and it had a lot of appeal, but when you actually try to do it.
That's a great example, nice to work with.
Good there.
Okay, we're good. Last up, we've got some minutes from our last meeting to approve from September 12. Second? All in favor? Anything else? No? Did I hear more?
I believe you're.
Bring this up, Pete, Chris, second. All in favor? Okay, we're done. Thank you, everybody.